Our city into your hands, Father. Father, we ask that you just give us divine wisdom, Father. Father, wisdom to move your city forward, Father. Wisdom to make the right decision, Father. Wisdom to make the educated decisions about the business of the city, Father. Father, we ask that you just touch each and every one of our commissioners, Father, each and one of our leaders, and each and every one of our community members, Father, that we will work together in unity to be able to move this city forward. Father, we just thank you for giving us another opportunity to get right today what we didn't get right yesterday. Father, we just thank you and we just give you all the praises in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you Commissioners, thank you staff, and most importantly, thank our audience for being here today to participate and listening in on our regular scheduled Commission meeting. At this time, City Manager, do you have any additions on an emergency basis?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any additions or deletions?
No, sir.
I'd like to make one. I hope they can make one. I'd like to make a, uh, I'd like to make, I'd like to move that we, uh, reschedule E because we just received, I just received a package today and it's a lot, and I got a lot of questions. And I feel, uh, at ease if the, uh, department here was here along with, um, the package person, because he can't get no, I can't, they can't, he's not gonna be able to answer my question, I know that. Uh, no, that we'd like to do a schedule, reschedule.
The packets were sent out.
I either make a workshop, do a workshop or something.
Now, I'm saying the packets were sent out Friday.
They were sent out Friday?
And then.
Okay, but I got, I got the hard copy today. It wasn't in there Friday when I.
It was placed, I believe, yesterday, but the, it was emailed to everybody on Friday to review.
Okay.
Okay. And then the director's there.
Okay.
Which, which, which resolution was that, Commissioner Scott?
E. And, um, I'd like for us to, um.
What's?
E. Which ones are in E?
Two and three.
What's, what's the resolution number that you would, uh?
No, I'm using presentation.
Presentation.
Oh, okay, presentation, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the way to it for, um.
Second.
Commissioner Scott to address it is when you get to that item under, um, under E, then it could be a motion to, um, defer it until the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, what about I?
It would be both in cases.
Same thing, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, hearing the agenda as presented with no additions or deletion, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, I move that we, um, accept the agenda. Um, and so, do I need to say anything, I guess? Or I guess that's what she said, when Mr. Scott get to it, just, or just vote as it is, Attorney?
Yeah, she would vote on the agenda as it is, and then when you get to it, you can address that in the, or dispose of it in the way that you, um, however you.
Okay.
deem necessary.
Okay, so I move that we, um, accept the agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Cowans Williams and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden that we adopt and accept the agenda as presented at this point. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you Commissioners, motion passed on a unanimous vote. Next, we'll move into presentation, proclamation, public service announcement. And we would take, uh, the public comments at this time. Are there any public cards completed at this time, City Clerk?
At this time, uh.
On agenda items.
We have two that will fall under this section, um, and they're both gonna be public service announcements. The first one is from, uh, Hope Cleckley.
Good evening to the City Commission, Mayor, and the residents of the city of Pahokee. My name is Hope Cleckley. I'm a licensed clinical mental health counselor, and I am an advisory board member and board of director member for the hub of Palm Beach County. My address is twelve twenty-six Southwest Medina Avenue, Port St. Lucie, Florida, three four nine five three. I am a native, born and raised in the Glades. Um, I'm here tonight to extend an invite to the city of Pahokee residents, City Commission and Mayor to the official ribbon cutting ceremony for the hub's newest location in Belle Glade on Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve to two P. M. We would love to extend time for Mayor Keith Bab to give comments and a proclamation during this historic occasion. The Recovery Community Hub of Palm Beach County aims to increase community access to recovery resources by supporting individuals and families with substance use disorders in all stages of recovery. They empower, connect, and advocate for those affected, working to reduce stigma and provide a wide range of recovery pathways. Specifically, they offer services like family support, employment resources, and one-to-one community resource navigation that includes mental health and substance abuse. Ms. Valerie Jordan is the site manager for the Belle Glade location. If you guys have any questions or concerns, she is always readily available to assist. Thank you in advance for your time.
The next person is Ms. Christine Bolden.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Christine Bolden, and I'm here tonight to represent Bolden Community Impact. The reason I'm here tonight is to invite this city commission and our entire com- uh, community to our third annual male health and empowerment event. It will be held on June seventh, twenty twenty-five, from ten o'clock A. M. to two. And at that event, we will have health, health screening, uh, we will have a, and ask the doctor segment. Last year, that was one of the most powerful, uh, portions of our event. And the main question was, what do you do when you go to the doctor? And he gives you that bad news? What do you do? Um, the, uh, the, uh, participants had the opportunity to talk to doctors and ask different questions, but that was one of the main questions that drove the, the conversation. And what impressed me the most was the doctors, I thought, this is Saturday, they're giving up their time, and I bet they can't wait to leave out. Boy, was I wrong. And I'm glad I was wrong. They hung out, y'all. They stayed around and they talked to the different vendors to find out what, um, what, uh, programs are in the community, till they talked to the residents. So they, and we had, uh, T. Roy, T. Leroy Jefferson Society. They were a big part of that event. So they poured back into this community, and it was very successful. We had about seventy male participants. This year, our goal is to have one hundred plus. So, we can do that, but not without your help. So, we, uh, we, we want to invite you all to bring someone, to encourage. And, uh, one thing they do, and I'm, I'm gonna get it, oh. One thing they do is, once you get the screening, they record the information on a card, and you could take that card to your doctor. And one guy said, you know, if his sister hadn't encouraged him to come, he wouldn't have. And, uh, his, all his numbers were out of range, and that prompted him to go immediately to the doctor on Monday. So, we will have a food distribution, and we will also have informational resources, and we will have activities for, uh, young children. So, please, 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 come out and take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
June seventh at Paul Cowan Williams. June two. And we'll be posting on social media. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional public service announcements or public comments card from the citizens?
No, sir, not for this section.
Thank you. Okay, in this section, we don't have any proclamations, and we don't have any other public service announcement. Now, we'll move to our presentation.
We have one proclamation.
Proclamation. So, we'll take care of that. We have one proclamation, May eighteen through the twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, as National Public Works Week. City Attorney.
Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Pahokee. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and in the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Pahokee to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Keith W. Bab, Junior, Mayor of the city of Pahokee, Florida, on behalf of the city commission and our citizens, do hereby proclaim May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as National Public Works He- Week in the city of Pahokee, and urge all citizens to join representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make in protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. In official recognition whereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of Pahokee to be affixed on this thirteenth day of May hereby Mayor Keith W. Bab, Junior, Vice Mayor Sancueta Cowan Williams, Commissioner Derek Bolden, Commissioner Everett D. McPherson, Senior, and Commissioner James, James H. Scott.
Thank you, City Attorney. On behalf of our Public Works, uh, Department, we ask the city of Pahokee will accept this proclamation and make sure it's, uh, displayed appropriately at City Hall for at least thirty days. We'll have it up for viewing. Next, we'll move to our second presentation, which would be the Lutheran Services Florida Inc. And we'll have our city, uh, manager, uh, introduce them, and then we'll talk about the contract if we actually wanna move forward in approval.
Okay. As Mayor, commission has indicated Lutheran Services Florida, uh, will provide a presentation. This Laura Conway, the Director of Procurement and Contracts, is here with us today.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Last time I was here, it wasn't good news. Um, but today, it kind of changed, so, uh, the purpose of us, uh, is in order for us to keep continuing serving the city of Pahokee. Currently, Lutheran Services Florida operates the Head Start and Early Head Start programs throughout Palm Beach County, and we are currently serving a thousand eight hundred eighty-two children. Uh, for the city of Pahokee, we actually are currently serving right now fifty slots of fifty children. We are fully enrolled, um, today. LSF continues to provide full-day, full-year Head Start services. We will continue to operate ten-hour instructional days, five days per week, to meet the needs of Palm Beach County families and children. Uh, we will operate approximately two hundred and twenty-two days for a total of two thousand two hundred and twenty instructional hours annually. Um, this helps support the parents, uh, to continue to go to work and have a safe place where the children can be. We are a enrichment comprehensive program that continues to meet the needs of children and families through education services, health services, nutrition services, mental health, and family services. Um, here are a few pictures of kind of like what we do. We provide three meals per day for the children, and, um, we make sure that the children are, have the immunizations complete, that they have their visions, their hearings, um, and we also provide educational services so they can be school-ready for it whenever they enter kindergarten. We understand that the city of Pahokee fight, uh, faces significant economic hardships impacting the well-being of their youngest residents. Um, the poverty rate is twenty-seven point four, of residents live below the poverty line. That's more than the double of the average. The child poverty is thirty-nine point nine percent of individuals under eighteen live in poverty, and only sixty-nine point nine percent of residents have a high school diploma or higher compared to eighty-nine point six statewide. Um, so, we believe the importance of an early childhood education. We believe that it's a foundation for learning. Early education is crucial for cognitive and social development. We believe that it has long-term benefits. Participation in programs like Head Start leads to better educational outcomes and reduce crime rates. We believe that also early education contributes to a more, more skilled workforce and economic growth. Investing in the Head Start programs in Pahokee is essential to break the cycle of poverty and to provide children with the tools they need for, uh, successful future. Um, due to, Pahokee has, was under-enrolled, um, and we will continue to provide interrupted services, ten-hour days for two hundred and twenty-two days in a year. But we are, um, going to reduce our slots in, from, uh, the Pahokee center from fifty to thirty, thirty-seven slots. We will just be reducing one classroom of thirteen children. And we are requesting for the monthly rental to remain the same. According to our facilities maintenance, LSF will, as stated in our lease agreement on page sixty-four, Article seven, Section seven point zero one, the tenant shall be solely responsible for all costs of performance of maintenance and repair and operation of the premises as required to keep the premises in good conditions at all time, on all year-round basis. Um, so, we will continue to be doing that. Our, um, expenses for the Pahokee, it is, um, five thousand four hundred and fifty-four point twenty-five. That is what it costs to maintain the property. Uh, that, so, our cost per child for Head Start is around seventy thousand dollars a year per child. Um, and the early Head Start is around fifteen thousand. So, we are requesting for our rent to stay the same, um, in order to successfully continue to operate the Head Start services. We understand that due to the slot reduction, our cost per child will increase, uh, but we're willing to take it, uh, if you will allow us to remain in Pahokee. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question?
Do you have any questions?
Yes. The, uh, the children, do the parent incur any, any cost as far as the child, okay?
No cost, no cost for the parents at all. Um, and we work with the parents to help them become self-reliant. Do we have a family services? That we work with the families to be able to provide, um, any kind of family goals, if they want jobs, support, or anything, we help the parents as well. So, it's a whole program, yes.
One more question. I, if I heard you right, you said you're gonna be reducing the number from fifty to thirty?
Thirty-seven.
To thirty-seven, so what's gonna happen to those, those other kids that are there now?
Well, um, right now, we, we, so, we, because LSF was under-enrolled, and like I, um, explained in the last meeting, um, we have been in, um, through the Office of Head Start, the federal government was requesting us that we needed to reduce our slots. Um, so, instead of closing Pahokee, because Pahokee was the center that was leave, that was less enrolled, we decided to close different, uh, classrooms all over. So, what we did was that even though our slot reduction has been approved since, um, March, we are continuing to serve the families as is with the fifty slots. We are over-enrolled right now.
Okay.
And whenever the children transition to kindergarten, we will, uh, we will, um, there, it will be by natural attrition that we will not just open that thirteenth classroom.
Okay.
Yes.
So, how much staff did you cut?
We're not cutting right now any staff. We are going to have to reduce, um, one teacher and one teacher assistant. And the reason is that we do not have, we need to, um, cut. But if there are o- other open positions, we have, um, we will offer them positions in the Belle Glade, in the South Bay, and in Pepe, if they're open positions. If not, we can also, um, uh, we will also have positions open in the West Palm locations, and we can also offer it, but we know that it's a considerable drive. Um, but it is one teacher, one teacher assistant, and the, um, one program aid.
Okay. I thought you said y'all, you saw the maintenance of the building?
Yes.
Yes, into the mix, too?
Yes. I, yes. And the tree trimming, too.
I have a question. I know you said you guys are responsible for the, uh, maintenance, and I'm gonna be honest, I, I, I didn't get a chance to read the contract. I'm gonna be honest, it's a lot, and it, we did get it after I was on Friday, so I'm gonna be honest, I have not had a chance to go through the entire contract. Um, so, uh, my question is, because I have not had a chance to go through the contract, I don't know exactly what, when you say you cover everything in maintenance, so when you're covering everything in maintenance, and I know there are guidelines that has to be, um, followed. How does that work with, um, making sure that it's meeting the guidelines for the health department, and what is the city's responsibility as far as if something happens? Uh, when you are repairing everything, does the city have a part in making sure with inspections? And how, how does that work with that being the city's building?
Well, um, we do have to be licensed by the health department, and so, they come out and they do inspect us annually. Um, and we are, we have been doing all the maintenance, everything, uh, the air conditionings, the, uh, the painting, the flooring, everything. The only thing that, I'm gonna be honest, if we need to invest in something big like the roof, then we would need some time to request the money for the Office of Head Start, but that is a conversation that, um, we would include you guys. Like, we would include the city in case there would be something big, as big as that, but we can request the money to, from the Office of Head Start, but it would take some time to get the money and get it approved.
But that's not in this lease, though?
Um, I don't know, but we can definitely, um, review it and see. I, I do not know what, um, I saw that we are responsible for all the maintenance, and we have been responsible for it.
And how much are you currently paying for rent monthly?
Uh, two thousand one hundred.
And just for information purposes, as you may be already aware, or may not be, uh, the Lutheran, uh, Foundation say it earlier previously that they was expecting to close that facility. A lot of their workers came up here, uh, pleading with the city to see if we could help in any way, shape, or form. We did write letters of support, uh, asking them to have that facility remain open. It's a vital part of Pahokee and our families, so I think it's a great idea that they was able to find a way to stay in Pahokee. Uh, of course, some of the kids, if they would have left, would have to been transferred to Belle Glade or South Bay or some other facility that may not been suitable for those families, and some of the employees could have ended up losing their job if it would have ultimately closed. So, I'm for one, a real pleased that they are here.
Yeah.
So, don't, don't, I mean, me questioning, don't mean that I didn't want you out there.
It's okay, I understand.
I'm just, I'm, I'm saying, we didn't, we didn't like, okay.
No.
Oh, no, I'm not, not, I'm, I'm not saying anybody up here is against it.
But I, I support, um.
Yeah, and we, and we are, we were, we are committed with the city of Pahokee. When I had to come last time, it was really difficult for me to say that we were closing, but we were severely under-enrolled, especially in Pahokee. Um, but we spoke with the staff, and we told them as well, uh, and we made a big effort to be enrolled, and we are fully enrolled. And that is the need that is in the community, and that's what we wanted to prove to the Office of Head Start. That if, because we were severely under-enrolled for the last three years. It wasn't one year, it was three years that we were under-enrolled. So, the Office of Head Start was requesting us, what are you gonna do? Is there a real need? And we had to say, yes, there's a real need. We have children, uh, fifty children that are, we are fully enrolled right now, and that is why we're, we're staying, and that is why we are here today, and I'm, and it's, uh, you know, to request the, the rent to stay the same.
I, I just want, I just want to say, I'm in full support of Lutheran Services. I just want to make sure that it's not personal, that it's business, and I just wanna make sure that we are covered as a city with everything in the lease. That, that's what I wanted to make sure, to read, to understand exactly what the lease is saying, so nothing happens and it comes back and say, you know what I'm saying, that the commission approved it, like, with the, um, roof, that's not in the lease. And so, it's not that I don't support Lutheran, I do, but I wanna also look out for the best interests of the city as well, as well as our residents and their children.
I understand.
Mayor Bab, if I may, uh, just for clarification purposes, and you kinda identified it a minute ago, on January twenty-eighth, um, Lutheran Services, well, a team came to present to the commission. It was on the commission agenda at that time, um, uh, to include the lease agreement. And it was decided that because of some of the concerns that they had with enrollment, they asked that we delay in that item. I think it was tw- twenty twenty-five oh two was tabled at that commission meeting, and today, we were, we were contacted by Lutheran Services maybe a month ago and said they are now ready to move forward with the recommendations. I had different recommendations, uh, for the commission for their consideration, and that item, unless you're gonna reorder, is scheduled to be heard under resolution, uh, twenty twenty-five oh two, under the original table resolution, as the number one item for resolutions. I do, um, I just wanted to reiterate, this is not the first time the commission is considering this agreement. I, for, obviously, for Commissioner Scott, this is his first look at it, but this, this is an issue that's, uh, been discussed at length, and so much so that it was on that agenda for consideration.
Not that lease. Not that lease.
Oh, no, not actually, of course.
This is actually for the, uh, we'll, 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 uh, a question to be asked from the.
Yeah, because someone asked, um, I think that was what you were discussing. One of y'all asked if, say y'all have fifty, y'all enrolled fifty children, and y'all dropping down to thirty-seven children, and someone asked where those kids were coming from.
Yes, well, she.
So, what I was wanting to say that, uh, me as a home daycare provider, a lot of us are early, early Head Start. Some of us with Lutheran, some with, um, ELC, so those kids will have some, uh, through the daycare home.
Okay. Well, I think when she explained it, she stated that they're not gonna dig, uh, drop any kids, but as the kids go off, they just won't enroll anymore, so they won't lose the service, they'll continue to service it. But that, that's my understanding.
Yes, that is the correct.
So, I had this one, that, 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 they, they care providers, they are somewhat on Lutheran Head Start.
Now, I just have one more question. Mayor Bab, I know they're saying they want the rent to remain the same. Um, I have a question for the city manager. Does he have any, um, quotes, I think we asked about that, of what the fair market rate is for renting, um, today? You know, today's fair market rate?
Yes, I do. Are, are we, are we taking up this resolution item now, Mayor?
No, we're gonna actually take. We know, we're gonna actually take it up under the resolution, so we'll be able to discuss. As part of his recommendation, I think he's giving us some option of whether or not we wanna continue to keep it the same or make some adjustment in the, the rent. Of course, the company here is asking that it be remain the same.
Yes, I, to answer your question, I do. But I was just wondering if we wanna take it up now or we're gonna take it under resolutions as listed.
At this point, we'll follow the general, take it under resolution as listed.
Okay.
And just one moment, um, Mr. Mayor, just to correct the record. There was a statement made about the roof not being covered. It is, there is a very expansive um maintenance requirement in Article Seven under your, under the lease agreement. And it has a number of different requirements. And so I just didn't want the, the potential leasing to leave thinking that they have no requirement to um deal with the roofing systems should something happen.
Oh, no, I, I said that we would, we would just need time to request the money to the Office of Head Start. Or any big expense like that. So we, we, we want to partner with the city and we are willing to take, but we need time to request the money if something were to happen. So we would work directly with the city to make sure that we are following all our procedures.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, one more question. Y'all pay rent and then y'all fix everything too?
Yes.
See, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm looking at that, y'all. That part right there. They gonna fix everything, they gonna cut the grass, they gonna keep up everything, y'all don't wanna do nothing? I'm looking at what's on the end, so for all the charges, so all their charges, people, all their expenses, we just cut the grass.
Yeah, at this point, we, we haven't said we're gonna be increasing their. Yeah. We'll move to the third item, uh, Mr. Jackson, and you'll be able to introduce or present that. And also, we're taking consideration, Commissioner Scott, say he wanted this uh postponed to a later uh time so he can be able to uh have some more uh review of it. And he also, he wanted to request that the finance director be here to actually present the uh budget that we have.
He, he is here, sir. Okay, he is here.
All right, the um, the Lutheran thing, I got a full understanding of that. I mean, if you wanna move on with that, we can. But um, the quarterly thing, I think, that's not, I think we need the um department heads here along with him to go with that. Because he's not gonna be able to just, uh, answers to the questions. The Lutheran part, you can go ahead, we can go ahead, whatever you need to do.
So you're considering an motion for him, Mayor?
You probably wanna follow your agenda, that's what you've already agreed to do. So when it comes up on the agenda, then you can vote on it.
It's up now, the presentation is up now.
Just the presentation, not the item, not the resolution?
No. For the second quarter report, that's where we are now.
Number three.
Number three. It's just the presentation.
Okay. Yes? You can make a motion, it'd have to be seconded and approved by majority to go forward.
I just make a motion on the uh, D three.
Fully state your motion, what, what are you asking?
I'm asking that we do a uh, that, that we move it to a uh, we probably do a workshop with that, or something.
That's your motion?
Because we gonna need a uh, the department heads available.
Yeah. Beyond is the department head, even they are available, they may be able to ask, uh, answer a question here too. But still, the finance director is a person who does the budget uh.
I read that part, like she said, it was on, I read that part. There is no way he can answer these questions. Uh, he's, cause that, what he put on there is just, you know, just some numbers. Some, there's some questions on there that need to be answered, and he can't answer them. I wanna expect for him to answer them.
I think we can't direct staff.
I'm just saying what we can, I'm just asking. I, I mean, I know, I know, I can't tell him, but, but we need to do a workshop. People, with him, so this, we'd be here all night going over this, but I think that's gonna take too much time.
So I'll second it for a workshop.
Okay, now we'll ask, call for questions. Now, I ask the first question, are we gonna end up postponing the uh, the quarterly report when we can at least get it tonight? And then in addition to that, ask for a workshop to go into more details on it? That we'll be able to ask a little more question, even request, as you indicated, maybe to have the department head present doing that workshop?
Okay.
We can do it that way.
So can I ask a question? We won't be voting on anything, he'll just be presenting? Do we have, cause this is an amended budget, am I correct, city manager or no?
This is just a presentation.
It's just a presentation, okay.
Okay.
And we're required to um, to make quarterly presentations of the budget. And this is just the second quarter's presentation of this fiscal year's budget.
So what is not, is it with or without the amendments?
I don't understand your question, Vice Mayor.
So has any amendments been made to the budget? Cause I know we've approved some things to take place.
Not since the original amended budget some months ago. So what, what you have in front of you is what we're operating on, or what we operated on as, as up to month, the second quarter of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay, we s- we still have a motion and a second on the floor. And that was to postpone this, so we can either vote it up or vote it down.
Postpone the uh presentation, you go ahead and do the presentation.
Okay, but we have a motion, I mean, you have to withdraw your motion, or we have to vote on it.
I'll withdraw it.
Okay. At this time, the motion has been withdrawn. So we'll move on with the presentation by finance director of the quarterly report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk, City Attorney, and the public authority. Uh, this is the second quarter uh presentation. As far as a budget amendment, uh, there was the question to clarify this. This is just a presentation. This is to monitor the status of the financial for the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Okay? Uh, and the summary covers the second quarter, so basically, we should be at fifty percent. Now, with the taxes, we are at fifty three, fifty three percent. And uh, the adverbal is really seventy six percent, we used to seventy six percent of the adverbal tax. Now, the permit and license, we are thirty one percent. There's some lags in there. Yeah, as well as intergovernmental, we are thirty six percent. And fines and forfeitures, we are seventy four percent. Charges and services, we are thirty nine percent. Miscellaneous revenue, we are thirty percent.
Excuse me, could you speak up please?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, we can see that right there.
Uh huh.
Can you go back up like that?
Okay, go to uh page five, please. Basically, can you see it now? No? There's a lot. Well, basically, the revenue is at thirty eight percent. Uh, as compared, it should have been at uh fifty percent. Uh, but there is some lags, uh, some of the money is a month behind, some quarterly. And there are also some revenues that, that I'm not expected to be received until toward April, May, June, August, or September.
But it's already enclosed in here?
No, it's not in, it's not received, it's not included in the revenue.
Excuse me, could you speak into the mic, some of the people can't hear you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so therefore, you, you're gonna have a lag.
Gonna have what?
Lag.
A lag for, for the, for, because some, the, the revenue, a lot of, most of, some of the revenue, we're not gonna receive the revenue until the, the month of May, June, September, August. Okay? That, that explains uh the fact that it's not at fifty percent, it's at thirty eight percent. Okay. And as far as the expenditures, let's go to uh page six. Overall, the expenditures is really favorable because it's at forty four percent and at fifty percent. Uh, commission's at thirty one percent, the city manager's at twenty two percent. Uh, the clerk at thirty, finance forty six, human services at fifty one. Now, the fifty one percent is, that can explain, uh, there were a, a time where you have the Carlos and also the payout. So that explains the variance, the, the, the more than fifty percent. Because there were pa- payout for Carlos when he left.
A payout for what, sick time?
Sick vacation and uh, uh, accrued vacation and sick, which was not budgeted for. When he left, the accrued vacation and sick were not budgeted. So the payout to him, and then you have a new director, also the salary, the salary still in effect. So it's not really, toward the, 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 the end of the year, it might wash, it might be favorable because.
Carlos be tired, so.
Uh huh.
Carlos be tired, so he just left.
I think he, 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 he secured on a different job. He moved out of uh, I think he moved s- somewhere else.
But you get vacation and sick time when you quit?
You, when you accrue, you, when you accrue sick and vacation, yes.
Please, please, audience, we're here to listen. He's presenting to the city commission, we're asking questions. But you all should be able to listen. Hopefully, you will speak enough that you can clearly hear him, but he is presenting to this commission.
In the audience, we hear a lot of moaning, we can't quite hear him clearly. That's why Mr. Bowman says speaking to the mic.
He's trying to, I understand that he's trying to do that, but he's presenting. Some things you may not hear as clearly as we will because we're up here. So we're gonna do the best we can to make sure you're able to hear.
No, it's not the pay them because he quit. As an employee, when an employee work, go for time, you accrue sick and vacation. When you leave the company, you're entitled to that accrued time. Yeah.
Well, we're not talking about your business, we're, we're talking about the city's personnel. We're talking about the city's policy. And, and when you don't.
Okay, please let me continue. Okay. The expenditures is at forty four percent versus uh, it's, it's not, not over fifty percent. So therefore, it's favorable. The special revenue, uh, the revenue is at twenty four, twenty seven percent of the budget. Uh, page seven. No, the presentation. You are the presentation. Well, no, 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 no. Uh, if you look at the detail. Uh, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't, you don't have the, you don't have this?
No. No.
I have, I don't have, yeah, I don't have that.
Uh, Ms. Clark, you didn't provide uh the Commissioners with the presentation?
They have the actual report that you provided. The report has been given to the uh, the, the media's team to present on the street.
We don't have those doc, I don't have those documents.
That's the presentation.
Okay.
That would be for um.
You guys have the actual report.
Hold on for a second. Hold on a second. It's like, it's page thirty two for us. Page thirty two.
Okay, if you go to page twenty nine.
Yeah, it got twenty nine and thirty two on it. It's got both twenty nine and twenty two.
Yeah, page twenty nine, those are the detail, huh? Do you have it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the special revenue is at twenty seven percent. And the expenditures for the special revenue is at zero percent. Due to delay in projects. Let's go to page uh eight and uh versus uh thirty for the detail. Go to page thirty. The ALPA, uh, we have eighty four thousand for forty nine, which is obligated, but it's not yet paid.
Eighty four thousand.
Yeah, that's uh for the minor repairs.
If, if you recall, Commission, um, those dollars had to be um secured before the end of last year. And those dollars were secured, so we don't lose them, but we have until twenty twenty six to expend them. We're in the process now of, of working through completing those projects that were originally contracted through our minor home repair program.
Ma'am, we're not gonna be talking from the audience. Let the commission ask a question.
What, what page on are we on?
So we're on page thirty four.
Okay.
So here where it says.
No, thirty.
Here where it says ARPA intergovernmental, okay? So let's, out of this one twenty three, one hundred twenty three thousand five seventy two, which was budgeted, that's the eighty four thousand, you're saying that has to come out of the hundred and twenty three? Out of this hundred and twenty?
It's obligated, it's not yet paid.
Right, but I'm saying, it, the eighty four thousand is gonna come out of the one, out of the one hundred and twenty three, okay?
The eighty fours was remaining.
So not the one twenty three, five seventy two?
That what was amended in the amended budget. And the actual was one twenty seven, four thirty three. And then it shows those things that were taken out.
And it says ninety three thousand was already taken out for home repairs. The ninety three thousand five hundred seventy two is what was taken out already.
What, what page are you looking at?
Um, it said, we're on page thirty four.
It says thirty four in the box.
On page thirty four.
No, that's capital project, that's not ALPA. ALPA is page thirty, you have to look at page thirty.
This on page thirty four, and it says expenditures, says minor home repairs, ARPA, ninety three thousand five hundred seventy two. Residential assistance, one thousand. So I guess my question, I guess I'm asking, um, the ninety three thousand five hundred seventy two, that's in addition to the eighty four thousand four hundred forty nine?
Which page, which page?
I'm taking thirty four.
It actually, you have two different numbers. One number says thirty four, one number says thirty one, so.
Yes, for clarity, the full agenda is gonna have a different number, his presentation, um.
No, I'm talking about.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Send up the page. Yes, so they check the packet, it's gonna have a set of pages.
Yeah, that's where the confusion is coming in, that's where I'm at.
See, live in seven, live in seven, like on third one. She said third one.
Vice Mayor, the total expenditures for the amended budget, if you're looking down at the last two items, total expenditures were a hundred and twenty-three thousand five seventy-two. From that, the actual what was, is forty-two thousand nine eighty-four that's been expended, which leaves a balance of eighty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine. So thirty-five percent of that, our total expenditure that was left, thirty-five percent of that has been expended.
Got it.
And we now have eighty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine to spend by uh the end of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, that was, that's all that's left from the.
That's it.
From the, how many millions we got?
That's total.
One point two million? Was it one point two? Or was it two?
No, what, the total?
Total for ALPA, huh?
Yeah, the three million. Three million one sixty-two. And uh if we go to page thirty-four, uh well, I don't know. This is not really what, this is not what I submitted apparently, because because uh the special revenue is on, the summary is on page twenty-nine. Yeah, yeah, that that's, all right, let let me continue, uh let me continue again. For capital project, uh the budget was, is two million five seven eighty. As of today, uh reimbursement need to be added. So it's at zero percent. For the expenditures, it's only twenty-nine thousand versus the two million, expenditures need to be added.
Just the reimbursements need to be added?
Yeah, as, yeah, as you know, uh the battlefield delay and uh McLaren, some of that. And uh the enterprise, the enterprise fund, the Marina is at twenty-seven percent revenue, and the the expenditures at uh forty-two percent. Uh yes. Uh, the cemetery, the cemetery uh is at fifty percent on the revenue side, which is uh favorable, and the expenditures are at forty-three percent.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How is it that we lose the money from Marina?
Well, the 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 Marina, the the general fund really, as of now, su is supporting, based on the budget for twenty-four and twenty-five, the general revenue is supporting the Marina because the Marina doesn't really uh generate enough funds to sustain.
What, what, do we have about that that costing us money?
Look at, look at the, look at page, look at page thirty-seven.
We're looking for expenditures.
So, all right, we have, okay, all right, you say regular Saturday, wait, who we pay?
The Marina.
We got, we saw my work?
Yes, Cheryl.
Oh, Cheryl, I have a Ms. Cheryl, so. It says uh professional service, what, what?
Well, the last, well, Commissioner Scott, the last uh couple of years, the audits indicate that both the enterprise fund were were operating at the deficit.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, so this is something uh that administration need to address.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
Question.
It 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 becomes, it becomes real difficult to to have a session of this sort, and it's so much noise and laughter in the audience, it's disrespectful to it's disrespectful to staff, Mayor, very disrespectful to staff.
Is the internet on the Marina working?
Which component of, there are several components of the Marina, when you mentioned the internet at the Marina, there is a harbor master, there is the conference room, there is the um the different campsites.
For the campsites?
No, there's no, there's no um internet connection presently at the campsites, there's there's a plan to include that.
So we're paying for the um, the one that we're paying for is in the conference room?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other general questions? Again, uh this represents the second quarter of the fiscal year, uh which you know we operate on a fiscal year from October one to September thirtieth, and this represents uh the first six months of the fiscal year. And those numbers, as Mr. Martin indicated, both the expenditure side and the revenue side should be at fifty percent. The fact that we have some numbers superseding fifty percent on the expenditure side is very positive, is very good. And he was explaining that a lot of our revenue sharing, that may be a little under the fifty percent now, it comes in sporadically throughout the fiscal year. So we'll see a bump in that number in the third and fourth quarter that will eventually and hopefully get us to the point where it was originally budgeted at. On the expenditure side, it's it's quite the converse. If we're over fifty percent on this expenditure side, that means that we need need to tighten the reins a little bit, or find out, find out the rationale behind the reason why it's over fifty percent, because we should not, as of six months, we should not exceed that based on what the budget that was approved. Now, does it happen on either of the expenditure or the, in the uh revenue side, yes. But our our responsibilities are to keep those numbers as close closely in line as possible based on the projections that we made during the fiscal uh exercises that you did as a commission. I heard earlier that there was a request to have maybe a a budget workshop. We will be scheduling those in the very, very near future to discuss that. We also have began the audit for twenty-twenty-four, which we're now in the budget cycle uh for planning for fiscal year, next fiscal year. So that will provide an opportunity to address some of the more detailed issues. And I'll I'll make myself in the in the department head available again if there. I really suggest that you come in and spend some time and get yourself a little bit more familiar with the budget and how the budget process works. And then I'll be giving you an opportunity to better understand a lot of the things that's being discussed uh tonight. So with that, if there's no other additional questions, or Mr. Joseph at this time, Mr. Martin at this time, I think we're done with the presentation, Mayor.
The next review to our consent agenda, the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five city commission meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion unless someone objects and wanna have approval for discussion.
Uh, yes, there should be a correction in the minutes. Go to it. I'm trying to find, hold on a minute. What page the minutes on? Trying to find the minutes. I'm trying to find the page for the minutes. Um, yes, for the minutes on page forty-eight, under in, where it says future agenda items, where I um asked for a workshop on June third for the um city managers and the city clerks evaluation. I also said, and it to be added to the June tenth agenda. Those were, that was my um future agenda items with the dates added to June third, but the June tenth for the go on the agenda is not here, so that to be added to the minutes.
There, if I may, it didn't specify in the motion June tenth, so the motion captures whatever it said. So how you make your motion is how it's captured, there's no legal way to correct the motion to add June uh tenth to it.
Well, I know I specified, I said at the next meeting, so the next meeting is June tenth, so that's not even on here. But I I I specify for it to be added to the next agenda, that we have a workshop and it be placed on the next agenda. I did say that as my future agenda item.
It would be captured at this particular meeting that you stated, what you stated, so the agenda itself, the past or previous agenda won't be able to be corrected at this time?
The past agenda, what do you mean the past agenda won't be able to be corrected?
When I say past, I'm talking about the one we're doing now.
So you're saying it can't be added to the minutes, is what you're saying?
Because your your motion didn't reflect June tenth, so.
It said at the, for the next meeting, it says I, we have the um, on, I said, my motion was to ha um have the workshop on June third, and it go on the next meeting agenda.
For that particular one, you didn't say June tenth, but if you would like to have have a motion, I will check the minutes, and I can only legally put in there what your motion was.
Okay, yes, I would like to.
But if your motion didn't say that, then I can't legally put that in there.
So you're saying I didn't say the next meeting either?
I believe in the discussion you may have said that, but in this is action minutes, so it only captures your motion.
Are there any other comments concerning the consent agenda that need to be discussed? Here and now, I would take a motion to a self, the consent agenda. And of course, uh, Miss Williams, Commissioner Williams' request would be included in this agenda saying that she are requesting that it be corrected. Our city clerk has said that, as far as her knowledge, it wasn't a direct request on the agenda, what you're stating, but she would check, and if she find it's true, she would add it at our next meeting to make the correction.
So are we able to not approve the minutes and wait until that is done?
It just say uh, that's that's a minor, we're gonna wait just to have whether or not.
Item, Mayor, bad, because we have to get the two done and evaluation done. After, I mean, that that is, to me, is an emergency for this commission because his evaluation is gonna come up in January, he's, we approved his contract in January. We're gonna have six months gone by already, that's to me of importance, that we need to go ahead and have this done.
Can I make a suggestion? When we do future agenda items, put that on the agenda for June tenth. Let's move on. When we do future agenda.
Are there a motion to adopt the uh consent agenda?
I make a motion over here to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mike Pearson and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of the consent agenda. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Mike Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colin Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Baden?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, this motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to old business update, city projects, city manager.
No, sir, I'll provide it under my mayor, under my manager's report.
Next, I, the moment I can, agenda is public hearings and ordinance, we don't have any. Now we'll move to our resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five dash O two, city attorney.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing and directing the execution of the lease agreement attached here to as exhibit A between the city of Pahokee and Lutheran Services Florida, Inc., to provide Head Start Services, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney, city manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir, this resolution again is one that was tabled back in January of twenty twenty-five. It was drawn at the request of Lutheran Services, they presented tonight. And for informational purposes, I just wanna provide the commission with some research and information that I've obtained. And ultimately, it's it's the commission's decision uh regarding the rate changes. The original lease agreement uh between Lutheran Services and the city of Pahokee began in July of twenty fifteen, and has lasted up until tonight. Again, the renewal was delayed as requested by the tenant, as it was unsure, unsure that it would continue with providing services based on uh the information that you've been provided. You've heard already tonight that a decision was made to continue to provide services, which is excellent news. The initial lease agreement payment began at two thousand one hundred dollars in twenty fifteen, and as of now, the payments, monthly payments are being made at two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents a month, yielding a total increase of one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents over a ten-year period. The current price per square foot for the six thousand and six square foot building is at a uh per square foot, four dollars and fifty-nine cents. As you're well aware, the real estate industry, just like most industries, have seen very sharp increases in recent years, which ultimately impacts rental rates even in Pahokee. Commercial rental rates in Pahokee and the Glades region can vary, and they do, depend and based on the property type, the size, location, age, and other intangibles. Currently, commercial rates for new commercial properties in Pahokee, industry suggests it can be as high as a hundred and sixty-three dollars per square foot in comparison to as high as seven hundred to eight hundred square feet in other parts of Palm Beach County. We all realize this. My recommendation for newly payments uh would be four thousand five hundred and ninety-five, ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, which increases the per per square foot rate from the four from the four dollars and fifty-nine to nine dollars and eighteen cents per square feet. This proposed increase continues to be tremendously lower than the regional average and below any comparables that I was able to find with similar properties in the Glades, which range from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars per square feet. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-five O two with the recommended monthly payments and rates with all other terms that remain. with the recommended monthly payments and rates, with all other terms that remain the same. And I would be remiss if I didn't provide you with, with the current information, the current rates. And I understand the challenges with, uh, Head Start and their ability to attract and maintain the level of service that they really would like to. And also understand the challenges with the socioeconomic, uh, issues in the Glades community and Pahokee proper. But again, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you what was current, what's increased all over the county and the fact that, uh, if we want to continue to grow and improve in our revenues, then we have to start at some point looking at, uh, what's most important in terms of operating the city, uh, from a fiscal standpoint.
Would you clearly state that number again?
My recommendation would be to increase, uh, es- essentially doubling what being, what's being paid now from two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents a month to four thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents a month.
And we can make, make that change as we see fit under our discussion. We'll make a recommendation if we want to continue. Uh, but the resolution that he's proposing has four thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cent. And I can tell you right now, well, I'll, I'll, I'll speak when it come, uh, for.
And the lease has five years and not ten on it. On page, um, fifty-eight, says the term of this lease shall commence upon effective date.
Now, I think he was saying about the ten years, that was the amount that had been increased in ten-year period. It went from, I think, two thousand and some to two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine in ten-year period. And that was one of the reason he's recommending the increase now. Not so much to make up for it, but the fair market rate that he feel would be appropriate.
No, I say he said pay that amount over the next ten years is what he said.
No, I didn't say that. No, I was, I was explaining, I was explaining that it started in two thousand fifteen. And from two thousand fifteen to date, over the ten-year period, it only increased a hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Oh, okay.
We can do it two ways. We can go and vote on the resolution with that amount and make an amendment to increase it or keep it the same. I don't know what gonna be the, uh, sentiment of this commission. I certainly wouldn't recommend that large increase, even if we needed it. Right. So let's, 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 let's get a motion on the floor and then we can ask a question and see whether or not we want to make any amendments to it.
Ju- just for clarification, the, the, uh, actual agreement was left blank. So there's no amount in there as it stands.
Okay.
I just wanted to.
Gotcha.
Give you what was.
Okay.
What was current.
Okay. So we're voting on the resolution without a, a amount, but we'll put it in as we move forward.
I move that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five O-two. Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
If you can address the blank issue.
Issue now?
As a, yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me rephrase that. I've moved that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five O-two, um, with the amount of, we'll say the same amount.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
Commissioner Mike Pearson, give, given that amount, those who can make sure it's on there, we're seeing the same amount, what is the current amount?
And how long with this contract? I have one question.
Five years.
Okay.
It's two thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Well, we'll make it two thousand five hundred.
There is also a clause there that says that there will be an increase of cost of living per year.
Per year.
So whatever the office of hatred gives us as an increase, we will increase. So if it's a two point five percent increase, that's what we will.
That's in the contract?
Just, just for informational purposes again, so you have the whole picture.
Well, I'm, I'm still. I'm still standing with my twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah, I understand, but I just want to expand upon what she was mentioning a minute ago. In two thousand fifteen, it was two thousand one hundred dollars. In two thousand seventeen, it was two thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents. In two thousand eighteen, it was two thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. In two thousand nineteen, it was two thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents. In two thousand twenty, it was two thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. In two thousand twenty-one, it's two thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. So there's been no increase since two thousand twenty-one.
But the increase was because there was, we didn't renew the lease because there was a lot of rotating, uh, employees. So it wasn't that we didn't try to leave, I didn't try, but there wasn't.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not debating anything from the past, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that the commission had all the information, uh, so you can make an informed decision.
So Commissioner Mike Pearson is saying we would, uh, approve resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two dash O-two with an amount of two thousand five hundred. That's just his motion that we're putting on, okay.
Second.
It has been motion by Commissioner Mike Pearson and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden that will accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash O-two with an amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for the rent. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mike Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Babb.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. The new rent will be at this time, two thousand five hundred dollars a month. Next, we'll move to resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, city attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between Career Source Palm Beach County, Inc. and the City of Pahokee has set forth here to an exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution outlines a memorandum of understanding with Career Source Palm Beach County and the City of Pahokee for work experience and training opportunities. For Palm Beach County youth ages seventeen through twenty-two, which obviously includes residents from the City of Pahokee for the summer youth program. The MOU as presented automatically renews annually unless terminated by the terms of this MOU. The City of Pahokee has requested fifteen interns to date, which will work across three different sectors of the city. I think it's last understanding, it would be five allocated to parks and recreation, five to public works, and five to administration departments. This program is fully funded by Career Source and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. City Commission having heard resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, properly read into the minutes by city attorney, properly explained by city manager, what is your preference?
Mayor Babb, I move to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner Calvin Williams for the adoption of resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote?
I'm sorry.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Commissioner Bowden.
And Ms. Haggis?
Commissioner Calvin Williams.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Babb.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, city attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a state highway lighting, maintenance, and compensation agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-seven authorize and directs the manager to execute a state highway lighting, maintenance, and compensation agreement effective fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. Subsequent agreements were put in place in two thousand four and two thousand twenty-one respectively. The two thousand twenty-one agreement expires in two thousand twenty-eight. And through this resolution is now allowing us to two-year fiscal year notice as required by FDOT. Staff recommends approval. There's a total of a hundred and forty-seven state FDOT light poles within the City of Pahokee. And the state is responsible to, for maintaining and, uh, compensating the city for these one hundred and forty-seven poles.
City Commission having heard resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager, what is your preference?
I move that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-seven. Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Pearson and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven. Call for questions.
I just have one question. Did you say it expired in twenty twenty-eight?
Yes.
And we are approving it, so the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven wouldn't fall within the expiration?
No, the actual agreement that's in force now, it was executed in two thousand twenty-one. And then that execution is a seven-year period before that expires. And it also allows, uh, municipalities two years' notice, uh, prior to its expiration.
Okay. Thanks.
In addition to questions, here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mike Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, city attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, piggybacking the City of Palatka lobbying services request for qualifications number two one, two zero, two one dash one eight, authorizing the city manager to execute the attached piggyback agreement, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-eight allows for the City of Pahokee's use of a piggyback contract and, um, from the City of, of Palatka and Becker and Poliakoff, P.A., for state and federal lobbying services. As you may recall, the City of Pahokee approved, uh, a resolution twenty twenty-five O-seven back in January of twenty, January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, which established lobbying services, uh, between the city and Becker. This agreement was to last for only four months, which it expires, uh, the end of this month. This agreement was, uh, approved at a rate of seven thousand five hundred dollars. The current agreement expires at the, again, at the end of this month. Staff highly recommends continuing a relationship with Becker for ongoing lobbying services that will include at the state level during the proposed extended session and for the federal legislative process. The piggyback terms, if approved, will serve as the exact terms under the agreement, which was proposed, exact, under the agreement which would expire November two thousand twenty-five, as it expires with the City of Palatka. So we're basically, uh, accepting the terms under Palatka's agreement as a piggyback to, uh, what we're proposing to do here in the City of Pahokee. The other thing that it also does, it re- reduces the amount that we paid under the four-month period to, uh, six thousand dollars a month, uh, again, because that was approved under Palatka's, Palatka's agreement. I think we have representatives from Becker, um, that's available through Zoom this evening. And if, uh, would like to provide the most recent legislative update, which I provided a written copy to you as I received it this evening before coming to the meeting. Uh, and can answer any questions that you may have regarding this, uh, piggyback agreement.
And my question would be to the city attorney, are we able, this is perfectly.
Yes, you're able to piggyback, um, professional, uh, certain professional services. And, um, in addition, um, the manager is correct. Uh, and I just stress that it is until November of two thousand twenty-five. And so what will need to happen beyond that is either find another piggyback agreement that we're, this firm, if you choose to use the firm, has a longer, um, period, uh, where they procure the RFQ or procure the services directly as a city.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner.
What relationship we got with Palatka that we couldn't have with Belgrade or South Bay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Scott, uh, piggyback agreements are for any governmental entity, basically. Your code allows for, um, piggybacking the state, piggybacking another city. And I think although the ma- manager can answer this directly, um, he may have been looking for something similar in terms of cost, um, somewhere in the range of what you all had approved, but he can certainly speak to that issue.
Yes, that's a part of it, but the, probably the most important part of it is that we've developed a relationship with Becker. Uh, and they are working on behalf of the city, not only through legislative appropriations, but also providing information that will put the city, I believe, in a better position in terms of applying for and receiving state funds. Uh, we've worked with them every day, every week since January. And it'll be, I think, in the city's best interest to continue a relationship with Becker. City of Bel- City of Belgrade does not have Becker as their lobbyist. City of South Bay does not have Becker as their lobbyist.
Okay.
City of Palatka does, and we were able to find that, uh, based on the work that we've done with them and recommendations from them as well.
That's all of this.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, attorney. Um, will this be a finding for us in the audit that we're not putting it out for the procurement process first? Is this a way around the procurement process?
Yes, your hon-, I'm s- your honor. Yes, um, yes, Vice Mayor, you all are allowed to do this pursuant to your code of ordinances.
But it will not be an audit finding for us that we didn't put it out for procurement, um, for be it to get.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
In addition to questions, here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Oh, wait.
You didn't do a motion yet.
We don't have a motion.
No, we don't have a motion.
No.
So what's the?
I entertain a motion.
The fee is gonna be how much? Six thousand dollars a month?
Yes. No, the commission approved back in January, uh, a rate of seven thousand five hundred per month. And this agreement is obviously less than that. So we would be paying six thousand versus seven thousand five hundred until November of, uh, this year.
And this until November would be from?
Yes.
June to November.
So it's a six, for the next six months, starting next month.
I'll entertain a motion if this is retired, Commissioner.
Mayor Babb, I move to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
I second that.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Calvin Williams. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Babb.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we entertain resolution twenty. vote. Next we entertain Resolution 2025-29. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the city manager to secure a fireworks vendor for the City of Pahokee's July Fourth Independence Day celebration for an amount not to exceed $37,500, providing for adoption of representations, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution authorizes the manager to secure fireworks vendor for this year's Fourth of July Independence Day celebration.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard Resolution 2025-29 properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager, what is your preference?
Mayor Bab, I move that the city manager bring back three quotes for the fireworks versus just us giving an open $37,000 and bring us back the three quotes to see what would be the price of them, just saying, okay, we have thirty, you could spend up to $37,000.
Thirty-seven thousand or thirty-seven?
He said thirty-seven thousand.
Second.
As a point of clarification, Mayor, I unsuccessfully tried to secure, I spoke with over eight different vendors, and the vendors that I spoke to, they were either not available for the Fourth of July, or they would not come to the, come to the region or to the area. As you may recall, as you may recall, the city.
Audience, please, keep the noise down.
Just like everything else, Mayor, it's the commission's decision on whether or not you approve or accept anything that I bring for you in terms of recommendation. This is the only vendor that's available on the Fourth of July that will come to the City of Pahokee. All the others, as I explained, would not come or didn't have any availability. The cost for last year's fireworks, in looking at the city's files, was at $30,000. I questioned the amount, obviously, when I spoke to.
Audience.
I questioned the amount, obviously, as I spoken and met with the vendor, and the rationale behind it was that there's been an increase in the type of materials and munitions that they use, and it's being seen across, across the industry due to the tariffs and their products coming out of China. That was the rationale that was provided. That was the quote that he provided, and again, it's up to the commission to accept or approve of the recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. In addition to questions from the commission.
So, you're saying you just got a quote for thirty-seven thousand? Because there's any, I'm just saying like you just wanted thirty-seven thousand just in case.
No.
But you didn't say that that's what they charge.
Well, that's essentially what the quote is for, thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
So, that's the quote that the guy gave you to do?
Yeah, this, this resolution, this resolution authorizes me not to spend beyond that, but that's, that's the total amount for the quote.
Now.
It is high.
Yeah.
The, the motion is to have, to go out to see if she can, we can secure three bids for fireworks. The only problem with that, if we're not able to, more than likely, we're not going to have a fireworks show, so we just have to, just keep that in mind. Yeah, I know I'm saying in Pahokee here. I'm not talking about Belgrade. I don't mind about going to Belgrade or even looking at Belgrade fireworks personally. I don't have a problem with it, but it's the community desire to do this. So, that's, that's, that's the motion. I'm just putting it out on the table. If we don't secure the three, we probably won't be in a shape of having fireworks in the City of Pahokee. As long as we know that and what we're voting on, it's fine.
We're just asking them to give you three quotes.
Are we making, are we making a motion to do something he's kind of already done?
But we don't, I haven't seen them. I'm just saying like I don't want to.
We're making a motion to do something that you've already done?
Well, I haven't seen the quotes. Have you seen them? You seen the three quotes?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting on the commission's approval.
For the, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for clarity, this is being brought as an emergency item. It says it in section, in section two of the, of the resolution, and so this is for you all's consideration based on what the manager is telling you that he, he doesn't believe he can get another vendor. Now, of course, you can do an amendment, and you can amend over that and require that, and then, but what I would ask you to do, if you do that, put some specifications in it, like if not within so many days, or something like that, where you either revert back to allowing the authority, or you don't allow the authority at all. So, when you make your amendment to this, just if you could add what you, you know, just the, the end result of what you're trying to accomplish.
Attorney, what did you say the emergency part at?
Yes, it is in section two.
Session two.
Yes. Days, Independence Day celebration on an emergency basis for an amount not to exceed $37,500 in a form acceptable, and, and the whereas clauses give the justification being that it deems, Pahokee deems the expenditure of these funds to be in the best interests of the city due to the short timeline required to secure the necessary vendor and meet event deadlines, and so therefore it is being brought as an emergency. So, the only thing that I'm interjecting, Mr. Mayor, is that when you make the amendment, that you put in, you know, what's supposed to happen, so it just, the end of it is not lingering.
Right.
So, redo my motion.
My question too, would this affect our audit? I know it can be done on an emergency basis, but one of their concern was we're using areas for emergency that.
Right.
It sometime appear that there was sufficient enough time for us to go out and lease required three bids that we are responsible for requiring.
From my legal opinion, it should not because it's allowable under your Code of Ordinances, but the commission could certainly consider that and, you know, not do it. So, it's really a decision for the commission, whether you all consider it to be an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, I, I bring this item to the, to the commission because I know it's an annual event, and I know it's something that the community looks forward to. This, this is not, this is not my event. This is not my recommendation. This is something that I brought, bring to the city, as it's been brought to the city for the last maybe twenty-plus years. So, this is not something that I'm suggesting that I want, want done. I did it as, because I know the Fourth of July is coming, and I've been working to try to find vendors over the last month and a half, and I've been, as I explained to you, none was, none was coming, willing to come, and the prices are representative of what's across the industry. Now, obviously, it is expensive, but as you indicated, if the community, if the city does not desire to spend that amount of money, don't spend it, and, you know, let's see what happens next year if the prices go down. But I, I just don't want to give the impression that this is my suggestion and recommendation to you guys. It's, it's one that's been ongoing for the, as long as I can remember. So, I just wanted to make that point clear.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, listening to the attorney, are you making any adjustment to your motion?
She just said put a timeline on it. You mean like for the three quotes?
Yes, ma'am, and what you, like, for instance, if you require three quotes, within what time period you might choose, if it's a week or three days or whatever, if you'll put that in there, and then what is to happen if he doesn't get three quotes, or he only gets one quote, you know, did you, do you just want him to try and then it reverts back to the language in the resolution? You, I just ask that you be a little bit more specific so that it could be implemented as directed by the commission.
That becomes an exercise in futility. I've been trying for the last two months, and this is what I've been able to get, and I've tried all over the southern United States in, in talking to vendors. So, it doesn't do much good to send me back and ask for additional quotes. They're not, you won't get them.
I'm gonna, what about in writing, at least so we can at least see the quotes, is what I was going to add to mine, that the commission be provided the quotes in writing. I know what he's saying, but we haven't seen them, so if he can provide us the quotes in writing within the next three to five days. And then if he can provide the quotes to us within the next, in writing, within the next three to five days, that we vote on it, that we vote for it to go out. I don't want, I know I, I don't want us to keep saying an emergency, 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 and so then, and if we can't get quotes, and then we will not have the event, we can take and use that fund another way within the city.
That's my motion.
For the purpose of the minutes, can we state it clearly so I can capture it?
We can't hear you. We can't hear you. I got people on here saying.
Mr. Love.
Who talking loud?
Commissioner Vice Mayor, could you again state your motion one last time and as clearly as you would stated, so it can be part of the record for the city clerk?
I move that the city manager provide three quotes in writing to the commission and present it back to the commission at the next meeting, and with the three quotes, it will go out for procurement, and if it can't be done in a timely manner, then we will not have a Fourth of July event.
Mr. Mayor, just, just for the record, you would either do the three quotes or procurement, but generally speaking, what you do is put it out, like, like quotes are separate from their.
Right.
Process as, that people sometimes utilize to substitute for a full-blown RFP, RFQ, going out and being in the paper and all of that. So, if it's, you probably won't have enough time to do both, so maybe you would consider having it, having three quotes within, you know, I think you said three to five days.
Yes.
And if three quotes cannot be accomplished, then the money should be, not, there should not be an expenditure for this. I think that's what you're saying, right?
So, okay.
Okay, and this would be an amendment, this would be considered an amendment to the resolution that you see in front of you.
I got a question. What if we get the three quotes and there are more than what? The thirty-seven hundred? What we saying now that we're not going to have it at all?
The thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand, I mean, I'm sorry. Just something to think about.
We can vote it up or vote it down.
So, if it's coming back to the next meeting, we can make a decision at that time, correct?
Her, her motion was to bring it back. Okay, so if her motion was to bring it back, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, do you want this to be brought back to you in three to five day, the next commission meeting, and gather the quotes in the next three to five days, or did you intend if he does not receive three quotes within three to five days?
Well, it has to come back to the next meeting in order for us to vote on it.
Well, you could conditionally state that that's what you're, I think you also said something, you'd like to see the information that comes, so.
And writing, three quotes in writing, yes.
So, if that doesn't happen, you can conditionally make that as a part of the amendment right now. You don't have to have it come back, you know, wait two weeks. You know, you can do it as a part of this amendment if you choose.
That the quotes be emailed to us and the two quotes be emailed to us within the next three to five days?
You could do that, yes, ma'am.
And we discuss it at the next commission meeting?
Okay, you could do that, yes.
And if there is not enough time, then we do not, money do not be allocated for that item for the Fourth of July. Is that the right, is that?
You, you could certainly do that. You could bring it back at the next meeting. I think what the manager is saying that is that he may not have enough time, but you could certainly.
No, you won't have, you won't have enough time.
You could certainly do that. You can certainly do that.
So, that'll be my motion.
Okay. Everyone clear? The, I believe the Vice Mayor is asking that the quotes be received if there are any, but brought back at the next meeting. That's going to push us out to a point where we're, we're comfortable with saying we don't care if we don't have a.
No, I didn't say I didn't care, Mayor Bab. No.
Okay, I'm, okay.
Yeah, I didn't say that. That's not what I said. I didn't say that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you would need a second for that motion.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner McPherson, did you second it or not?
Yes, I'll second, but I still want it to come back to the next meeting, then we make a determination then, because even if you get the quotes and there are more.
We can have discussion, so I won't have something to say.
I'll second it. I just don't want to cancel it without looking at the quotes and just say, no, we're not going to have it.
Right. She's saying for it to come back to the next meeting, so we'll see whether or not we have it.
But she's saying.
No. Didn't you ask for the quotes to be brought back at the next meeting?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
But, but I said if the quotes are more than what we've already got. Go with the less, that's what I'm trying to get clarification of before I second. Let us make a determination at that time.
My interpretation, and this is, this is my interpretation, if we don't get the quotes that we're looking for at a certain amount, this event will be canceled. It just obviously would be canceled. It's no one's fault. It's just commission will that these quotes be attempted to be obtained, brought back at the next meeting, and we would vote on whether or not to accept whatever quotes we have or reject them and just not have the fireworks. It's just that simple.
Let me just get clarification, make sure I'm seconding the right thing. As long as the quotes come back, we get, we have three quotes, we can look at it at that time, determine if we're going to have it or not, not to say at this meeting, now go ahead and say, no, we're not. Let's make a decision on all three quotes at that time. That give us time to think about it, and, and now, if the other scenario, if we ran out of time and they don't want to do it, then we just, we have to accept it.
City clerk, are you clear on the motion?
I'm gonna go back to the video to make sure, because it's just been so much back and forth, but I, the motion would really reflect what Vice Mayor says, so at the end of the day, I have to just put what she says. I don't want to.
Right, okay. Vice Mayor, it asks a second time, but would you just state your motion again?
I move that the city manager provide the commission with three quotes in writing to determine whether we are going to have the fireworks or not. It comes back at the next meeting for approval based on the three quotes that we get.
I'll second that.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Calvin Williams and properly seconded by Commissioner Mike Pherson to have the city manager seek three quotes, bring back at our next meeting, and we would then decide whether or not we're going to move forward with having fireworks. Call for question. Here in honor, are you ready for a vote? Roll call.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed by four-one majority. Next, we are moved to new business presentation by the city manager of activities of upcoming events, if any.
None at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Now, we'll. Now we're moving to the mayor's report. Again, I would just like to thank everyone who came out and participated in our national day. Audience, please, please refrain from talking in the chamber. You're here to listen and to observe the commission's conduct of business. Please, you're interfering with the commission and you're interfering with some of the residents, so please, if you would. I'm not looking at anybody. Again, the mayor's report, I'd like to thank everyone who came out and participated in our National Prayer Day at the marina. I think we mentioned that at the last commission meeting, but just want to reemphasize that. Want to thank the Palm Beach County Sheriff Department, our fire rescue, our clergymen that came out, our community stakeholders and all the residents that came out. Uh, some complaints were that it wasn't a large event, but I think it was a good turnout. Uh, we normally try to have it uh, live streamed like we have most hours of events. Uh, we weren't able to do that, but again, and I can assure you, it was a great event. And the majority of those that was there uh, enjoyed what happened at that event. We're gonna ask you to continue to pray, not only for this commission, but our leaders and our staff and this entire community. Keep us in your prayer as you move forward. Also, I would like to congratulate Pohoke High School graduating class of two thousand twenty-five. They had their graduation ceremony last night at the fire ground. And it was a great turnout from the public. A lot of folks came out, although the weather was pretty bad going over there. Everyone made it back home uh, safely. Also, I attended a Black Elector Fishers uh, annual scholarship uh, luncheon at the Marriott in West Palm Beach. That was a great turnout. A lot of Pohoke residents were there, also the Bowden Foundation was there. Uh, some of the uh, school uh, personnel were there. And we was uh, publicly displayed on their live stream, all of the commission, their pictures and their names and the city that they represented. So it was a great event. And again, I would like to congratulate all the students recipients of those scholarships. I also like to wish everyone, the women's, the ladies, the mothers, a happy belated Mother's Day. And thank you for all that you do. You are the reason that we all are here because of a mother. And we thank you for your effort and what you do. And that concludes the mayor report. Next, we'll have the report of the city manager.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commission, uh, giving an update on Barfield Highway. Reconstruction and paving tasks have been ongoing since last week, Monday, and seems to be going along relatively well. There continue to be challenges with controlling traffic and having residents and businesses alike to follow detour routes and recommended traffic flow, especially during non-working hours and over the weekend. Paving is scheduled to be completed by the end of this week, weather permitting, with striping and signage to be installed shortly thereafter. We will continue to ask that all vehicles observe the detours and temporary road closures for at least a week until after final lift. And it will be very helpful if the members of the commission uh, could speak to uh, community and, and, and impress upon them the importance of not driving over wet pavement during, during this period of time. We all know and remember what happened and what occurred as a result of the initial asphalt lift. Uh, that has caused uh, the project to be uh, requiring additional funding and also additional time. I have requested a time extension uh, through FDOT, just in case we run into any issues with weather or any other unseen, unforeseen delay. We don't anticipate any delays, but to avoid not completing all tasks by June thirtieth, I made a request and awaiting approval. I also had an, an opportunity this past week to do a tour of the two ninety-eight district, which is a special water control districts uh, within the city and unincorporated uh, Pohoke. The East Beach Control District controls all of the canals and uh, culverts along uh, in the area that I just described. We also, I was also able to find out that there are quite a, quite a few ditches that's owned by the city that was originally thought to be owned by the uh, Special Water Control District. We have to develop a maintenance program. I requested that they assist in this initial round to allow us to get those ditches under control. And they have agreed to do so with scheduled maintenance to begin within the next three to four weeks of all the canals and culverts. And then we will maintain and develop the funding to have a, a maintenance program to ensure that we're uh, keeping what is owned by the city of Pohoke under control and, and, and on the maintenance. Uh, Mister David Davis, who was here uh, a few commission meetings ago, took time out of his schedule to provide the tour for myself and city staff. I, I recently, I recently learned that DEP funds have decided not to reinstate uh, the agreement for the MLK project. DEP senior staff clearly explained to me that the original agreement in two thousand twenty-one provided two years for construction and completion. After no action on behalf of the city during this initial two-year period, the city requested and received a one-year extension in October of two thousand twenty-three through Resolution two thousand twenty-three sixty-seven, which ratified Amendment One to Grant Agreement Number L two one zero four. Upon its passage, it was clearly explained and understood at the time that there would be no further extensions. After several attempts to contact and ultimately making requests for commencement from DEP, I later learned through email that the project had been canceled and funds recalled. Have made multiple, have made, I have multiple conversations with DEP staff since then in attempts to have them to reconsider, uh, which were all denied. I do have plans to apply for future DEP grant funding for MLK park improvements through their land grant uh, procurement process. And that's all I have today.
Thank you.
So you're saying we, they're not, we, we don't have the funding for MLK anymore? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, those funds were recalled by the state.
Next, we'll have the report of the city attorney, if any.
No report at this time, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we're moving to our future agenda items of these commission, if any, and I'll start with Commissioner uh, Scott. Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes, let me add that um, item, um, that um, for the June tenth meeting, that we um, that the evaluation tool for the city manager and the clerk be on the agenda for that meeting.
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Cowans Williams that the evaluation for the city manager and the city clerk be on the June tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting, seconded by Commissioner Mike Fearsen. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, motion passed by unanimous vote.
This is for clarification, uh, Mayor Commission, are you requesting the valuation or the valuation tool?
That we approve it, that we approve the evaluation tool that we're going to use to evaluate you and set the, yeah, and set the goals.
I just wanted to make sure that we were doing the evaluation tool, because it was not stated as such.
Oh, I thought that's the evaluation tool.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're clear.
Do I need to add um, at the workshop, because we have to set goals? So I guess would that be a separate workshop or would that be at that workshop?
You have the workshop already.
Yeah, the workshop.
So it has the tool um, on there.
But is it to also for the goals? Cause I wanna make sure I specifically say that, that it's for the goals as well, to set goals as well.
Cause it's a, it's a part of the tools. So you guys um, said that it would be, so it'd be a part of it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Again, so that is clear. In order to have uh, it brought back to the commission on, on June, on June tenth, that tool would need to be developed fully by the June third, the end of the June third workshop.
End of June third workshop.
Okay.
Yes, and so let me just ask a request, um, because I know Commissioner Scott is new, so will you provide him or send everybody a copy back out with what, make sure that we have what we already started on?
Yes, we could do that.
Cause I, he knew he doesn't have, he wouldn't have it. So make sure that we all have it so that we can look at it.
Are you requesting that you, it be resent to you as well, or just to?
To everyone, just to make sure that we all have it, so that, well, at least when we, we have opportunity to go ahead and look over it. And we can get through it at that June third meeting if we have it at a time.
We started on the city manager's own, but I think we, we also had one for the city clerk, but that was something that was more generic for the, for the generous staff. So she, uh, someone would have to bring one that we need to use specifically for a city clerk.
I thought the city manager said he had a few he was gonna look at and send out to us for the city clerk.
They were all sent to you previously.
For the city clerk.
Yes, sir.
For the city clerk, and we were supposed to look at them and um, make sure we can.
So we have the motion.
It's already the motion is second. Second, I second it.
Been moved and seconded.
It's been voted on already.
It's been voted on, already moved. Commissioner, no future, thank you. Commissioner Mike Fearsen.
Yes, uh, in light of being transparent and for the good order and to make sure that we try to move our city forward, I would like uh, to place on the item for review and discussion the audit findings, so we can come up with a correction action plan, uh, that we have a workshop on May the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, at five o'clock.
May twenty-seventh, that's the um.
That's the same day that's the.
That's the same day as the, for the youth, at five o'clock for the youth that day, we're supposed to recognize the youth.
Well, let me make, change the date then, um, cause we have a meeting the same day too, don't we?
At five thirty, I think it is.
The next meeting is June tenth.
Well, the next, I guess we have to do it on the next week.
You have a workshop on the third already?
On the third? Okay, I guess we have to go to.
Workshop on twenty-seven? Where to schedule?
Can we do it at five o'clock on the tenth?
Yes, we don't have a workshop that day.
Five o'clock, um, my motion again, that we uh, discuss the audit findings and the correction action plan on the tenth, on the workshop at five o'clock, June the tenth.
Before the meeting.
And I just want all of us to be on the same page, so, you know, whatever those findings are, we need to, as a commission and administrators, make sure that we make the corrective action, and we all be on the same page. That's why I wanna have that workshop for discussion.
I'm just asking for clarification, just to make sure that you all received copies of the findings already, correct? Make sure that Commissioner Scott gets copies of both findings for the J-LAC and also for the um, OIG report. The others, do you still have your copies or you need, need it to be sent?
I'll see how mine, I can't speak for them.
Okay.
Right, so it's been moved by Commissioner Mike Fearsen that we have a workshop on our audit finding on June tenth, two thousand twenty-five. At what time?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
There may not be enough time, but we have.
Are there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Been seconded by Vice Mayor. Call for questions, hearing none. Are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote.
Have some more. Have some more. I wanna request that the auditors be present at the May twenty-seventh and give us an update on the audit that, that we selected, that we um, give us an update on the um, previous audit and the current audit, where we are and that kinda stuff. At the June, uh, at the May twenty-seventh meeting.
Okay.
That'll be prior to us having the workshop.
That's, that's a bit early, Commissioner. We just starting to, they're just starting to go through, they say, the finances and gathering information. So meeting, uh, we will have a schedule that we'll be providing to you that will outline the workshops. But as it stands now, there'll, there'll be actually nothing to workshop, because they're just starting the process of loading the uh, the financials for this fiscal, for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Well, I still would like to have them to the meeting, so we can discuss the audit findings, that, uh, not the audit findings, but the um, the, the J-LAC um, thing, just to get some, for information purposes, I still would like him at that meeting. And he making if you can.
For him to discuss J-LAC findings?
No, the uh, not J-LAC, I'm sorry, the previous audits, the audits that he's already completed, where we are, I just wanna get a, a, a review of, of, of those, of those thing. What he's done up to this point.
So you're, you're looking for, I, I just wanna be clear, you're looking for audit, um.
That he's, he's completed up to this point.
For what years?
Uh, whatever he's done uh, up to this point.
Up to this point for twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, but what I'm just explaining to you now, that there's, there's not much that he's done, there, in the process of preloading information that will give him the reports, and we, we just signed the engagement letter maybe two weeks ago.
I think when he's requesting previous audits, so some of the finding that was occurred, that we can kinda get an ideal, and he may have an input on what he found and what can probably be corrected in the future. I think that's what he's looking at, maybe previous audits.
Okay.
They may have done at least one or two that previous.
It should have been at least three from that, we behind.
If I'm not mistaken, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I'll make the request, but I can't say for certain that he's gonna be available on the twenty-seventh. Or I can't not say that he will, that would be a, an extra charge based, not based on what his contract aligns with.
Uh, back in his contract, he have that stipend, he have some of that language, if I'm not mistaken. That um, him to come to give us uh, reports. I think in the contract, that is addressed as far as him coming to give us reports. I believe that is in the contract, um.
Okay, yes, sir, but the report, the information that you're requesting, he's already reported on that. He reported on that in January for the twenty twenty-three audit. He reports after the audits are complete every, every year.
That's not what the contract said, to my recollection, if we need him to come, so we can have a discussion, as Mayor Bab was saying, so we can try to um, maybe get some directions and, and suggestions or whatever it might be.
Okay, I can definitely do that, but again, I, I can't speak for his schedule for the twenty-seventh, but if he's, twenty-seventh is not available, I'll ask when uh, his next available date, uh, that he can make himself available.
Okay, Commissioner Mike Fearsen is adding a date, but as the city manager indicated, it may not be of the auditor, may not be available, but he will get it as soon as he has another available date. I'm just making sure that we understand it may not.
Can, can we get a clarification on the contract to make sure that, you know, when we need to, something like this, I take. something like this, I take audits very seriously. I'm the audit chairman and I take those things very seriously. And we need to make sure that we know and we getting all on the same page. We need him present at the meeting.
Do we have a second on the request for the auditor to be at that particular meeting?
And I will, I will give him one option, if he can't make it on the twenty seventh, the next.
It has been moved by Commissioner Mike Fearson and seconded by Commissioner Scott. Then we have the auditor be at our June, was it?
No, no, it was the, uh, May twenty seventh.
May twenty second meeting. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mike Fearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commission, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Bab.
Yes, motion passed by unanimous vote. Okay, next we have.
I have one more, I have one more.
Commissioner.
I like.
Commissioner, I, I don't want to, we, we did agree at our last commission meeting. We won't ask for too many at one time.
Well, this, this one.
Three, the four we used to have in the past. So you have to choose a few to say, this is one I want to try to get as close as I can to the date I want.
Well, I'm gonna give a future date.
But I'm seeing you doing three now though.
No, this one is, this one is important. We don't have funding from MLK Road right now, this one is important. I would like to make a motion that we, um, direct the Parks and Rec Board to have a meeting. Uh, I'm gonna give a date, and as a matter of fact, it's in the scope of their duties according to ordinance, section two, point one sixty-two. The directions of the, uh, thing, as a matter of fact, I'm just gonna read the last part and part D. Correct me if I'm wrong, attorney. See duties and advisory, duties of the advisory board. That advisory board shall assist in the planning for city recreational and playground sites. Activities, let me blow it up so I can see. Activities, plans, capital improvements, guidelines, programs, and any other matters at the request of the city commission or the city manager. And I give a future date for that, so we can start looking at, if we can try to find something to get that park, uh. Uh, we have a meeting June the tenth. I'm gonna give them, now to give you time to notify the board, uh, by June twenty-four. They should have a meeting before, by June twenty-four, figure they'd be any time in between then. But I want to put that on the agenda that we vote for that at the next, at the next meeting though, which is the twenty-seventh. That the commission is directing the board to move to meet and then come back with a.
This is a future agenda request by Commissioner Mike Fearson that by June twenty-four, we would like to have the park and recreation committee meeting. And that would be added to our next commission meeting. Are there a second on that? It has been moved and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden. Call for questions?
Uh, question. Um, have you all reached out to all of the members of the board and had your initial meeting with them, with the attorney?
Um, no, but this will be the additional meeting.
But, by direction, when we, they going, well, I want them to do what our ordinance or what our charter say as far as that park is concerned, that's what I'm concerned about right now.
Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mike Fearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Bab.
Yes, motion passed by unanimous vote.
I'm done, ma'am, sorry.
No problem. Next we have general public comments. City clerk at this time, if we have any comments or are completed by public.
Um, yes, sir, so we have two that were submitted before the cutoff and then we have a few that were submitted after the cutoff, which is five minutes after the start of the meeting. And so I'm gonna leave it to the commissions of discretion to accept the few that were, um, submitted after the cutoff.
Commissioner, just for a quick vote, I need to know whether or not you all would allow the addition of comments that came in after the five-minute cutoff for the.
Ma'am, did, did we vote on the, about the meeting, I'm sorry, did we vote on about the meeting for the, um?
Yeah, we voted on it, didn't you? Yeah, we voted.
Yes, it was voted on. Okay, so the first, um, one is from Miss Tammy Bussy.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Citizens, PBSO. Okay, um, as I stand here, um, first I want to say as far as sometimes when you come up and you speak and based on your statements or whatever, they look at you, it's taking sides. And I'm not like that, I'm an adult and I just believe the only side is the right side, so, um, and, and my point is to grow our city. Like I've said before is, I was born here, raised here, graduated high school here. I moved away, but I came back and I brought my businesses here, back home. We own property here and we're in the process of purchasing more property. But the reason why I wanted to come up today is, um, it was on the news and then I Google it and it says the worst places to live in Florida for families in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Guess what city is the first? Pahokee. And that, that just breaks my heart because, you know, um, that, you know, to hear that my hometown is one of the worst places to live, you know, especially like I said, you know, coming back. And it just saddens me to hear that. Now, I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, okay, because the truth will come out on what we're hearing lately, you know, but I'm just feeling like, um, if money was provided for our city, why wasn't it used? You know, especially with the condition that it's in, as I ride through town and I see the broken down buildings, the raggedy roads, you know, even some of our citizens, their homes, you have to start from home. Their homes are a mess too, so it starts with that as well, it starts from home. And I think that enforcement should be out there to make the citizens do what they need to do, but then our leaders should do what they're supposed to do, um, as well. And so I'm just saying that, yes, hold the citizens accountable, but also, you know, you gotta hold yourself accountable. Um, I'm looking at where there, we have a code enforcement department. Are they being told to do what they're supposed to do? To go out and check and have these landlords accountable? If you own a building, you need to make it clean or do what you're supposed to do. If the building is raggedy and torn down and no windows and no stairs and all that stuff, then someone needs to be held accountable. Because our town, you know, and we have a culture and like they say, most of our people that are born here, we still love our city. But we gotta do something that's gonna make it where we have business and people want to come here. They want to come on vacation, we talk about the marina, that marina needs to be used, that's a moneymaker for our city and we need to just look into it. So I just stand here, like I said, not to point fingers, because we know what we're supposed to do, all of us. You know, we know what we're supposed to do, and I just want to say, we need to step up. We need to improve our town, we need to hold people accountable. We need to use our money for what it's supposed to be used for, to grow our city, you know, and clean it up and homeowners and everyone, um, you know, held accountable. And then too, we have to accept programs that will help, help our youth. I'm on the executive board with the PBSO Police Athletic League. And the gentleman that's president of, he keeps asking me, Ms. Bussy, how can we help the city? How can we help the city? What can we do for the youth? And so I had, refer him to, uh, city manager, Mr. Jackson, and I think it stalled, I don't know what happened, but it didn't go anywhere. And so I just want us to get back, because they keep asking me, Ms. Bussy, how can we help? How can we help? And we, we have an organization like that, that has the funding for our youth. Let's get out there and just give our kids something to do, so they don't get in trouble. So again, I'm just here to speak from the heart, this is my hometown. We're here, building businesses and buying property, so that way we can do something too, to give people someplace to stay and something to do. So I'm just saying, let's get together, stop fighting, and there's no taking sides, because there's only one side and that's the right side. So thank you for your time.
Next, Commissioner.
The next one is from, um, Mr. Robert Love.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Mike Johnson, I was born here too, born and raised here, and I grew up here, I know pretty much everybody's here. Great job, Tammy, it just breaks my heart to see me, been doing business in Palm Beach twenty-seven years and we hadn't been able to utilize the place that we grew up at, it's do, it break my heart coming back here too. I've been trying to get my mom to move for years, but she decided my dad don't want to leave, so she's still here. But the reason why I'm here today, because Mr. Love been, uh, we've been contacting back and forth. She got a canal on the side of her house that, she fell in and my dad saved her from drowning in the canal on the side of her house and nothing been done about it. And I notice when it's raining here in, uh, Pahokee, the house flood, they just, you know, they piss me off because they don't listen to me. They consider they want to continue living here, up in that kind of condition, house, this is a nice house, but it's, it's, it's not safe. And then they got a little small gators coming, so they know, baby gator come through, through the canal, you know, they got to be a dog gator somewhere. And my dad was sharing with me that he saved some of the girl that fell in the canal a while back and he even told me that somebody had drowned in the canal before, so I want y'all to just, you know, just, uh, get your code enforcement, oh, yeah. No, just take a ride out there, just take a look at the canal, because it's, it's very unsafe and, uh, we need to be accountable and take accountability for it. So I thank you for listening to me and I got to get back, I'm sorry. But, uh, I'd like to do business with you guys too one day, serious, in our, in our hometown, because we, we know we've been successful in Palm Beach, but why bring it there? And we right here, we got the lakefront up there, great location, it just break my heart just to sit, just sit there and do nothing. So y'all know, keep us in prayer and, uh, we'll be back in touch, thank you.
Mr. Robert Love.
Robert Love, twenty-six thirty-eight, Gately. I ain't got no long story, it ain't no long speech, because what I say is what I've been saying. And everybody say, I've been lying, but I remember I stood up here and say, Keith, do you know anything about them two million dollars, what they said? And you said you didn't have no evidence. And I tell you, look in the mirror, you'll see a lot of evidence. If you just go stand up in the mirror and look at yourself and say, well, how four million dollars got missing from Pahokee? And I don't know nothing about it. How we can set up in here tonight and have a meeting and nobody say anything about the audits? Nobody say anything about the money that's missing? But they gonna say, oh, we gonna fix Barfield, and then now they tell me, oh, it ain't money, it ain't no money for my Luther King Park. Well, if anybody been on the live, I've been on the live all the week telling people, we gonna get some of that two hundred and seventy thousand, even done talk to some of the commission, some of the two hundred and seventy thousand, we can go out there and fix the park ourselves. We done came up with the numbers to get the clay, to do the, the, uh, the concession stands, to put swings in, here's somebody already done brought brand-new swings to put in the swings. Now we got to do is just go out there and paint them. You know how you go find an old person's house and they can't get it done, but we can go in there and remodel it and make it look like it's new? We can do the same thing for our park out there, because they just told me that ain't no money. And it was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that Mr. Greg Thompson got the, got the grant back in twenty twenty-one. But y'all sat up here, babe, in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and y'all ain't did nothing for the park, but say, oh, we got two hundred and fifty thousand for the park. And it's a twenty thousand dollar grant that the city done gave. Let me tell you what to do with this twenty thousand dollars. Put it in our hand, because we gonna bring y'all all the numbers what it gonna take to get all of this done. And then she come here, she said, she jumped up and left, called two thousand, I mean, June the seventh. June the seventh, we planning to be out there, get the whole community. Herb Crawford and, and Big Show them, they got a bunch of kids that gonna be out of school and they gonna get paid. And then we gonna have the whole community to go out there like they do in Boynton, like they do in Wellington, like they do in all the other cities around here, they don't keep on waiting on no general contractors. People go out there and fix what need to be fixed in the park, where our kids are have something to go, got somewhere to go. Because like I tell y'all, our kids ain't like us, we were migrants. We were migrants, we went up and down the damn road from camp to camp. Our kids are magnificent, they don't have to do what we had to do. So what we gonna have to do too, is make sure they have something to do when they wake up in the morning. We can put that softball field together and have twenty teams out there on every weekend. We got kids went out there last weekend, know what they say? No park, but you know what people did? They went back out there yesterday, I mean, Sunday. They showed people, we know how to act, but we need the commission to know how to act. Don't set up there and act like y'all don't understand that four million dollars missing and we know it, all the roads ragged. Keith, I wanted to ask you, whatever happened to Mr. Lucas OIG report? Whatever happened to the sex harassment that you sat up there and act like he was gonna, you was gonna do this and do that? You ain't never said nothing about it. But Keith, that's the same thing I'm saying about the four million dollars, you still sitting there and act like you don't know nothing about it. And his two audits done come out, and I told you they were gonna leave you with egg on your face. Now egg is on your face, because you sitting up there now and you can't say anything about where the money went, how the money got lost, but the auditor say it's over four million dollars. And then, like I still say, I want the, the commission to do what they can to get behind us, because like I still say, if y'all come up with the money to buy the material, we gonna go fix the park and we planning on doing it June, June the seventh, the first Sunday in June. Y'all buy the clay, y'all buy the paint, y'all buy the things that we gonna need. And I know you got it in general funds, y'all say y'all they got it, but you had twenty thousand dollars for the rest of two fifty. You got twenty thousand dollars, put it in the hands of the citizens and put the material out there and see what we do with it. We won't be sitting around and then waiting on another grant to come back. I remember y'all, we going to get some more money, Keith. Y'all ain't got no more money, and then y'all done lost the money, what you got? And then y'all think y'all supposed to be sitting up there and people who sat in the audience and look at y'all like y'all doing something. Y'all ain't doing nothing, nothing. I just left the splash pad, it ain't running. Ain't no park in this community, so why would somebody want to bring their church in here and put them in school? And then when they get out of school, they don't have a park they can play in. You go out there on Sunday, it ain't nowhere for the kids, one swing for the kids, black and white. Y'all ain't seen that. But people, like I say, we can fix this park, do y'all agree? Do you, any of you agree, agree that we can do it? Ain't said we got to go get somebody from Bonfong, Egypt. We can get them from right here. And Herb and, and Big Show them behind it, ten thousand percent, that wasn't my idea. They called me, say, Mr. Love, I love what you doing, let's do this. So I'm telling y'all, I love what y'all ain't been doing. I love what y'all ain't been doing, so now make us love what you can do.
The next person is Andre Warren, Mr. Andre Warren.
Good evening, everyone, uh, citizens, uh, lady of the commission and, uh, gentleman of the commission, city manager, Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, um, to wait for Chris to drive, Andre Warren. I came here as a business owner myself. Um, my first gripe is, um, and I paid all my business permits taxes, uh, but as a business owner with a food truck, um, I don't know if you pass this around or not, this comes from the state, the DBPR, that's the overarching authority for the state of Florida for food trucks, restaurants, hotels, anything. Uh, they give me a checklist when I do my inspection, right? Um, and then they say, hey, you're, you're good to go. Right here in the city of Pahokee, their business registration packet, item number five, says business inspections, a hundred twenty-five dollar inspection fee. The first thing it says is a building safety inspection walkthrough, you can pass that around too. I have a food truck, I don't have a business, I don't have a building, I still got charged that same amount for the inspector to come in and say, good to go. Wouldn't know, and I asked the, I asked, uh, Ms. Plonco the day before, hey, do you have a, a checklist? That the state, the state gave me a checklist, do you have a checklist? Oh, no, you get that from the inspector, inspector, she told me, I called the inspector, they said, no, you get it from the city. So now I feel like that one twenty-five inspection fee was just a money grab. Because they, they had no checklist and that inspector came in and said, you're good to go. Didn't check anything, didn't check the fire, didn't check the, the tags on extinguisher, didn't check to see if I had hot water, nothing. So maybe it's a fault of the company that the city chose to use, but at this point, I feel like I was bamboozled and I should, I rightfully should, uh, request a refund for that because nothing was done, I paid for a service for them to say, you're good to go. And that's, okay, that's just one of the points I made, uh, I wanted to get a, a location, uh, it was on the side of Thriftway and they told me with this. And they told me with this rezoning packet, it was twenty-five hundred dollars to get a, uh, use inspection. It's already commercially zoned. Not doing nothing special, but they say twenty-five hundred dollars regardless, we say yes or no. I said, no, I'm not doing it. Not just me, I'm pretty sure hundreds of people said, no, I'm not putting a business in Pohokee because y'all charged me twenty-five hundred dollars and saying regardless if we approve it or not, you're not getting your money back. So I'm pretty sure people walked away from that. So as a business owner, I just think that the commission should, you know, uh, 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 address, uh, appeal it, do something, uh, because there's no ordinance for a lot of stuff. It's just on paper and saying, give us some money. And I just think it's a money grab. I could be wrong, but I just feel that it's that. And, uh, another thing I want to address in the city as a business owner, uh, I've been to seventeen countries, five continents. Never have I ever seen some in the city hall, there's an apartment complex for another city, Lakeview Villa, Palm Glades. In the city hall saying, basically saying, Pohokee residents, leave Pohokee, come to Belgrade. I think that's just atrocious. That's, I don't, I don't know if y'all agree with me or not, but why take the citizens out, out of Pohokee? And it's in the city hall, but that's my time, my yield. Thank you guys for your time.
The last comment is Mr. Darren Miller.
You can call and schedule a meeting, I'll be with you.
Good evening, mayor, commissioner, and other esteemed platform guests. My name is Darren Miller, M B A, currently a twenty-five-year-old Dr. Kenny, born and raised here in Pohokee, Florida. And I come, I come here before you tonight as a concerned and invested member of our community. I'm here to speak on behalf of a group whose voices often go unheard, our youth. Right now, our young people don't have much to look forward to within our city limits. There are limited outlets for creativity, recreation, and growth. The roles are, the roles are in disrepair damages, damaging vehicles and making it difficult for families to get around safely. Our parks and recreation program have prices that are frankly unreasonable for many working families, which only widens the gap between opportunity and access. I'm nervous. We have no new business, businesses bringing fresh energy or job opportunities and no fully functioning event spaces that offer safe, structured environments for our community gatherings, celebration, or youth programs. My question to you, my question to you tonight is, what are we going to do to empower our youth and breathe life back in our town? We need real investment, affordable programs, renovated parks, safe streets and spaces where young people can dream, build, and belong. We need to invite new businesses, support local entrepreneurs, and find ways to engage our youth with mentorship, internships, and leader, leadership opportunities. Our youth are our future, but if we don't give them something to stay for, something to strive towards, they are looked elsewhere. Let's work together to make this city a place where families thrive, where young people are excited about their future and where everyone feels they have divorce and a purpose. Thank you for your time and services.
Next we'll have commissioner comments and for the good of the order. And I will make a statement at this time to let each commissioner know that if you want to address anything that was said during the commissioner comments time, is an opportunity to do it and I encourage it if you like. And I start with, uh, Commissioner Scott coming this way.
The, um, Triton wanted me to thank everyone that supported them and hope that they represented the city well. And, um, I'm proud of them. I don't know about everybody. They had some donors and, um, they just wanted to make sure that I let the donors know that they really appreciate it and them helping out, reaching out. And they had a, a known ones donor, so they didn't know who it was. So they just wanted me to let everybody know that they do appreciate it and they hope they, uh, represent, represent them well.
Thanks, Mayor Calvin Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a comment, but I do have a question for the attorney that I would like for her to, um, explain to me, um, so I can have a better understanding as of tonight. Can you please explain to me the sunshine law when it comes to two commissioners? My question is, if two commissioners are at an event, a meeting, or anything, and anything is being possibly discussed that can be, um, that, that, that's being talked about that can be discussed, do one of the commissioners have to leave the facility and is the sunshine law being broken if they are not discussing anything with each other but in the same room? Can you please explain that to me?
Sure. What, um, what happens is, um, many times whether it's a social event or a, another event unrelated to the business of the city, if there are two commissioners present, um, and they're not discuss, discussing amongst each other, uh, or more than one commissioner, I should say, um, an issue that will foreseeably come before the commission for a vote, then, um, there is not an issue. The issue comes in when the two commissioners are discussing at any event, any function, whether it's, or email, WhatsApp, Facebook, or any, anything where two commissioners are discussing the business of the city of something that is, um, likely to come before the commission for a vote. So that is the rule for the sunshine law and that is what, um, you all are all subject to.
And so no one commissioner can be asked to leave the room?
Not if that one commissioner or multiple commissioners are not, um, discussing among, amongst each other, the business of the city likely become, to come before the commission, um, for a vote. Thank you.
I think specifically we talking about?
And just to be clear, um, you know, for the resident, because I don't want there to be any thought that there's a, um, issue with two people going to the same church. If they are discussing an issue that's likely to come before the commission for a vote, that is the violation of the sunshine law, not just being in the same place at the same time.
So for example, being, so for example, being in a meeting that's scheduled by a commissioner pertaining to something that is related to the city being involved in something. Is it the same?
Can you talk a little bit louder?
I'm saying, in a meeting where a particular commissioner has set the appointment to meet based on something that was brought up in the commission. So in a meeting established by a commissioner about something that we, we discussed and actually voted to move forward with. I'm not talking about an event, I'm talking about an actual meeting.
Well, the issue is when two or more, or one, two or more commissioners are present discussing an item to, that is likely foreseeable is what the statute uses, to come before the city commission for a vote, that is the violation. So to be present in, um, a location would not be enough to trigger the sunshine law. Now, having said that, um, you know, what a lot of cities do is, especially it comes up dealing with homeowners association meetings. Um, you might have one commissioner go present, leave, um, but that doesn't have to take place. The, the statute is triggered when the two commissioners are discussing an item that's foreseeable, um, to come before the commission for a vote.
Thank you.
Owens, I just want to say thank you to all the residents that came out tonight. It's so good to see all of your beautiful, beautiful faces. We're asking you guys to continue to get involved with your, um, city. We still have boards that we need you all on. Please get involved with some of the boards. We have a beautification board. So please get, um, an application, fill it out, get on some of the boards, let's work together. Um, I know we talking, um, I heard, um, Ms. Bussey talk about the dilapidated buildings. Let's get on these boards, have meetings, talk about it, and see what we can do to move the city forward so that the appearance of our city can look better than what it is looking now. And that we, you know, can, um, where people want to come to our city and we, we always say we want to make our city a place where families want to come, live, and play. And so let's just take what we have, clean up what we have and make it inviting that people do want to come here. So let's start with our own and what we have. So please get involved, get on some of the boards. Glad to see all of you all out. And, um, just let us know if we can do anything to support you and, um, thank you and have a good night. And Mr. Love, the only thing I can recommend, you know, we can't get involved with day-to-day, make an appointment, make an appointment and meet with, make an appointment, meet with the city manager and see what they can, you can do to work collaboratively, um, you know, to move our city forward. So meet with him to, um, and, 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 and take your ideas with, and take your ideas to him and see, you know, what he can do so that we can work together and move the city forward.
Commissioner Bolden. I have one or two few comments. Uh, I too would like to thank all the residents for coming out today. I like seeing you. I like seeing you here live and in person, uh, to speak your voice and speak your mind and let us know what's on it. Uh, you can tell that by even the one or two that submitted their comments card late and we accepted it because we want to hear from you. I like to encourage us to continue to have town hall meetings. And town hall meeting give us one thing, to hear the voices of our community. And hopefully when we in those town hall meeting, we're taking some notes and we are there to a, answer questions to the best of our ability. That's the time we should be able to do that. I push for live screening of these meetings. And we do it because of transparency. So our resident would know what's going on. And that's why we allow you to speak too, for transparency. And we'll do a better job in trying to answer your questions, but majority of them will come at those town hall meetings. There was a question asked about the money. I done heard two million, three million, four million. I read the audit. I didn't hear, I didn't see anything with, I didn't see anything about four million, but I tell you this.
You got six hundred and sixty-three dollars up in your flight. Like I said, person still flipping the money, that's still a lot. We haven't upgraded our flight four times. I read the audit. I ain't never seen one.
But anyway, we're listening and we're going to continue and continue to listen and work with you as a commission and as a community. We got to quit blaming, we got to quit complaining, and we just got to work together. No one is perfect, but we have to put in the work and we have to be accountable by ourselves. We all have to be accountable, the commission, the staff, the residents, everybody trying to move our city forward. And let me just say this about the money they say is, is missing. Our quarter audit conflict sometime will say that if it does, it may trigger something we can do and cannot do. And most of the audit, to be honest, for instance, a freezer we put at the restaurant, if that wasn't in that grant and that freezer was paid for and there was receipt for it, but their freezer say, I'm gonna call, say a hundred thousand. That was a figure they use to say money was unaccountable for, things like that. It don't mean that someone took it or stole it. It didn't clearly say anybody did that. And I agree, and the city has said that what's in the audit, we would address it and do our best to correct whatever deficiency that has been cited in it and we're gonna do that.
We just now just found out that the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar grant that Mr. Thompson got back online with y'all. Y'all sat up there for two years or something with that same old junk. Oh, we doing a survey out here to the park. We got the D bucket. Y'all sat up there and told them lies about the splash pad, everything y'all been lying about. And then I hear Mr. Jackson saying about the canals. Because you know what? I've been out there by Mr. Mr. Jackson, Ms. Johnson's house and the canal, they took they tree. Their, their land is in the canal. And go look at my lab, let me show you the tree, what, what they planted, it's in the canal now. And then the bank of, the bank of, the farmer's bank is up this house. So the water ain't gonna never go that way. He gonna come up and he say, Billy.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address, we'll address.
And then the other thing what I love about, like y'all be saying about hot, emergency, look, the cemetery look like a dump for months of days. Y'all need to put five or six people up there, got two people up there. I got a call this morning, there's two people up there working. And the cemetery, people called me all the way up to cemetery. I said, I know they ain't gonna leave it looking like a dump for months of days. Well, I know they hitting the town looking like a dump for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, so I just stopped looking over what y'all ain't gonna do.
Yeah, let's, let's address those during town hall and let's make sure that we.
Town halls ain't never work. Y'all have town halls, it don't never work. Keep out of there every town hall and they ain't never got nothing.
It, it'll be improved.
Yeah, I know it because we got some different people up there, Mary Day up there, we, just you and Mr. Bolden up there right now. It's some new people up there that gonna make sure we get something improved. I believe you. I believe with all my heart. I ain't gonna just stop coming. You might not see me, but I'm coming. And I will be on tonight when I get on. They gonna take me to.
We'll, we'll move to Commissioner Mike Fearsen if he have anything to comment on.
Yes, I just want to encourage all of, all of our citizens to get involved. We can't do this without you guys. And if you get involved in the boards, you have a commission here now that's gonna listen to you and your suggestion. That may not mean we might not do everything that you want, but everything that's within the policies and procedures and our ordinances and our charter, we must abide by those. But we here to work with you and I want to encourage you to get involved in the boards and, and let us hear from you. Even, even the, uh, meetings and the workshops that we're scheduling, even about the audit, though, that's a public meeting. You are welcome to come. And I just want to thank you, thank all of you guys for your time and we need y'all. It's a song that I need you, you need me. We all are got part of God's family, but we need our ci- citizens. We cannot do this. We, we, this, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me finish, Mr. Love. We need you all and we cannot move our city forward without our citizens. Your voice matters to us. We are accountable to you guys. Y'all voted us in these seats. And it's our duty to create policies or put policies in place to ensure that we're running an efficient city. And that's all I have. That's all I have.
Mr. Love, Mr. Love, we gave you an opportunity to speak and let us, let us move. City commission, having had all business that was brought for us, taken care of, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that the motion, I mean, um, I move that the meeting is adjourned.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner McPherson. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Roll call, madam clerk.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can't really hear. Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
And Mayor Baugh?
Yes, thank you, Minister.